Good evening, Mr. Garcia, are you already?
Good evening, Council President, on your call, yes.
Alrighty, so, um, but my time is five twenty-nine, um, now it's five thirty, and I will call this meeting to order. This meeting is being ordered. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to Public Laws nineteen seventy-five, chapter two thirty-one. This agenda is complete to the extent known and was sent to the Trent Times, posted on the First for Bulletin Board in City Hall, and filed in the City Clerk's Office. Former action will be taken, roll call.
Ms. Caldwell-Wilson? Mr. Harrison?
Present.
Mr. Michelle?
Present.
Ms. Vaughn? Ms. Wilkins? Ms. McBride?
Present.
Okay, Mr. Koloji, are you with us? Mr. Koloji? Moving on to Department Heads, Mr. Cruz?
I am present, good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Colin Sherry? Mr. Liston?
I'm present, I'm present, good evening, I'm sorry, I was having a hard time muting with myself.
No worries, good evening. Uh, Mr. Liston?
I'm present.
Thank you. Mr. Bridges?
Present.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Present.
Mr. Douglas?
Present, good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Daniels?
Present, good evening.
Good evening. Dr. Ames?
Good evening, I'm present.
Good evening. Mr. Anatari? Ms. Richardson? Mr. Lavenberg?
Sean Sample, and, good evening, Sean Sample, in for Mr. Mark Lavenberg.
Thank you, noted. Uh, and Mr. Zalinski?
Present.
Uh, excuse me, Mr. Garcia, we need to raise here, Wally.
Mr. Anatari, beautiful, good evening, sir, thank you.
Thank you, good evening, yes.
Mr. Garcia Maria Richardson is also present.
Thank you very much, Mr. Richardson, good evening.
Good evening.
Okay.
Edward Koloji, present also, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Koloji. Noted. Mr. Koloji, we have four to proceed with at this time.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes, we may continue.
On your call, Council Presidents, move on.
Yes, we can, um, move the screen up to the approval of the minutes and then to the, um...
Certainly, is there a motion to approve the minutes of October fourth, uh, October sixth and October eighteenth of twenty twenty-two?
Second.
Moving second, thank you. Roll call, Ms. Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Are you? Yeah.
Thank you.
Are you?
Ms. Wilkins? Oh, excuse me, Ms. McBride?
Yes, uh, Mr. Garcia, will you please try to monitor the, um, the outside, um, influence on the line, please, I would appreciate it.
Certainly, ma'am.
Um, um, yes.
Uh, going through trying to mute any outside influences now, thank you. Um, on your call to move on, Mr. Council President?
Yes, we will move forward with the presentation.
Understood. Uh, Mr. Bridges, I believe, uh, Mr. Bridges, uh, has, uh, Wo Flow Cannabis, Cannabis Business Presentation, and are these individuals available?
Yes, we are.
Yes, they are available, and they're on the call, sir.
Beautiful. Um, would those individuals want me to share anything, or are they, uh, set to just to, uh, speak at this time?
Mr. Garcia, I would, uh, I would like to share my screen.
I'm hearing a lot of background noise here, forgive me, uh, who's speaking?
Uh, this is, uh, Frankie Williams, I would like to speak when it's time to speak.
Excuse me?
Okay, that time will be a public comment, I imagine, unless you're part of the Wo Flow Cannabis Business Presentation.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Garcia, this is Matthew Kutch from Wo Flow, if it's okay to share my screen, I'll start a short presentation.
Certainly, sir.
Alright, so there's a lot of, uh, background noise?
I'm going through, ma'am, to try and mute whoever I can, um, and I keep hearing one with... I don't know whether that's something in the background with Mr. Kutch, or the only other people I see with active microphones are you, Council President, Mr. Kutch, I see no one else.
Alright, you may continue.
Ms. Vaughn, I see you're here, thank you, noted.
Mr. Garcia, I'm able to share my screen, says host disabled participant screen sharing?
Uh, give me one moment.
Sure.
They need to mute their thumbs, jeez.
Okay, try now, Mr. Kutch.
Uh, still unable, unfortunately.
Mr. Kutch, is that noise coming from, from, from your phone?
No, it's not coming from you, I can't figure out, I mean, I'm not sure who that's coming from.
It's phone number ending in zero six zero six.
That's Mr. Koloji.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'll, I'll mute this, I apologize.
Uh, Mr. Garcia, if I may, um, I just sent you a copy of this presentation to your inbox, if it is suitable, um, to go that way.
Perfect, give me one moment.
Sure, then.
Zero six zero six.
Muted, waiting on this, uh, item to come in. I'll be with you momentarily. Mr. Kutch, is it coming from you yourself?
Uh, it was, I can't, I cannot send to...
You should be seeing it from Sophia, my first name, at woflow.com, and it's a PDF document.
It's a PDF document, okay. And it went to my email?
Uh, let me just confirm which one, yeah, it's the B Garcia at Trenton, D.
Okay, give me one moment. Doesn't seem to be here yet.
If you have problems, I can always, you know, talk it out, and it doesn't come in the next couple of minutes.
Alrighty, because we're...
Go ahead.
Always time sensitive, is there anything that, um, this, uh, organization can do prior to the screen coming up? Can they, um, speak to anything while they're trying to get the screen up?
Uh, um, Council President, I could go through the presentation by voice, if that's okay, and then, uh, why?
Yes, if we can't, if he can't get the, uh, screen up, I'd appreciate it, and if he gets the screen up, we could just go right into what's on the screen, okay?
No problem, and what we can do is we'll make this presentation to available to anyone that would like to see.
Alrighty, thank you, you may continue.
Thank you, Council President, uh, so, just want to start off by thanking everybody in the Council, uh, the Administration, the Directors, many sitting employees that have gone in here today. For years, you know, we've been working and trying, has been at the forefront of the cannabis industry in New Jersey, and truly, there has been a lot of people working, so I just want to thank all of you behind the scenes that have put in the many, many hours.
For the record, sir, could you put your name and your organization on the record, please?
Oh, I'm so sorry, my name is Matthew Kutch of two two six South Broad Street, Wo Flow, uh, Cannabis Dispensary.
Thank you.
So, Wo Flow, Mill Hill, and the city of Trenton, uh, we all start at the beginning, what does Wo Flow even mean, where did we get that, just so you can understand, you know, our name? We spent a long time trying to see words that resonated with us and where we wanted to go. We saw woe as an exclamation of wonder and discovery, and flow as a state of continuous focus. Together, a homage to where cannabis comes from, and affirmation to where it's going. One of the things about Wo Flow, you know, some of you have seen us probably over the years, is that we see ourselves as one of the hometown teams. We're rooted firmly in Trenton, myself, I was born in Trenton in eighty-seven, uh, in the West Ward. My family had a business in the South Ward, and I spent thirty-three, or thirty, I'm sorry, thirty-two years of my life in Trenton. So, you know, the ability to become an asset to the city has been something that I've always dreamed of. There are some other people on the team, again, that call Trenton home, and I do want to mention them too, because they're very important, you know, people to our team and to the city. Fillmore Charles, another person on our team that is co-founder of Black Cannabis, also the Trent Cannabis Community and Hub Thirteen, truly an integral member, and one of the first and foremost cannabis advocates in Trenton, and has been putting a lot of time over the years. Also, Jacques Howard, I'm sure a lot of you are familiar with Jacques and Trenton three sixty-five, pretty much has his, you know, hand in all good things in the city. We're lucky to have him on the team and be able to help guide us in the right way to do things. And that's really where I want to start, Wo Flow's journey began five years ago, and it's hard to understand that because, you know, it did take so much time to get here, uh, because of the legal process in, uh, in New Jersey. But during that five years, we developed the team and the plan that we believed would help the community and the patients the best. Uh, and actually, this is, you can see the screen, this is the page number one. Um, we focused on three main things, bringing the, um, the, the economic benefit to the city of Trenton, the medicinal benefit to the patients, and most important, helping to right the wrongs that has been done in our communities and many other black and brown communities around the state and the country. We're made, made up of Trent locals, highly experienced professionals in the cannabis industry, and other regulated industries such as medical professionals, and foremost, we believe in cannabis as medicine. You can see on the pictures a couple of our educational events, we would held, uh, one of our classes each month in the public library on Academy Street, so that became, you know, a staple for us and place that we were lucky to be able to use. One of the other things is Wo Flow is excited and has been excited to be one of the few minority-owned cannabis businesses in New Jersey, or a certified MBE Enterprise in New Jersey, and from day one, diversity, inclusion has been a top priority. Our diversity can be seen naturally through our ownership, employees, board members, and investors, and we're lucky enough to have most of our team since the beginning, uh, year, five years ago. You could go to the next page. So, while education is probably the foremost thing that you might hear about us and most important to us, and where we spend a lot of our efforts and continue to put a lot of our efforts, and we know that, and work needs to be done in New Jersey, our outreach and our community initiatives is where we really also shine. You know, Trenton being home to us when we first started, we got the community, people together that we knew, and we thought, what can we do to help, where can we be an asset? We've delivered thousands of meals to a lot of the, uh, the, um, senior homes, the homeless, children, uh, around the city that were food insecure, and that was something that has been important to us. Filling the book bags, hundreds of book bags with children's future on the Trent Police Department, uh, you know, something we were very happy to be able to do, and we also did this year with, uh, with the book bags and a bike drive. Also, cleanups, working with doctors in the area on education classes and seminars, local groups, uh, trying to be able to also help other entrepreneurs understand how could they get in the industry, how could they get involved, even if it was from the ground floor, something that we have been trying to teach. Being able to partner with Black Cannabis, and like I said, many other Trenton, uh, amazing organizations, has allowed us what we have hoped to be a true asset to the community. Uh, you go to the next page. Yep, so, you know, one, you might have heard about the building that we have lucky enough to be chosen, and we are Trenton, we seek to be a part of the efforts to enhance, and that's something we, we started from day one. One of the reasons why we chose this building is because of the history, the notoriety. You know, a lot of the people that have lived in the city understand that intersection was a lively intersection years ago, when the courthouse was open, when the bank was actually a bank. Businesses were thriving, there was a lot more foot traffic, and why Mill Hill is one of the most beautiful areas in the city, we hope that we can even help even more, uh, from a, you know, a, basically, looking at what has been done in the US. There is a great example, which I'll talk about next, it actually was one of the top dispensaries in the US, uh, and draw national attention, and there's one reason we did look at the bank. But, um, overall, the outside, the inside, something we have always wanted to keep as is, really highlighting its assets, changing as little as possible, and finally allowing the rest of the city and hopefully state and country to see this beautiful architecture that we do have in our city. You go to the next page. This is actually where we got our ideas from, in, uh, Massachusetts lives this bank, it is the only one in the US like, like ours, and, you know, we are the only two, I should say. And why it was interesting to us is Brookline is a small city close to, um, Boston, actually similar population size, about eighty thousand people, similar location of where the bank is in relation to their city, uh, state and federal buildings, traffic, uh, you know, basically, all things that we looked at, what could we do and how could we help? We were able to learn this education from, uh, NEDA in Massachusetts. And one of the best things I do have to say, just being a little, you know, Trent proud, is when this is a beautiful bank. Ours is better in Trenton, and we will be able to get national attention from this, drawing hundreds of people to the other businesses, and that is one of the big goals of, you know, what we hope to do is be able to help others patronize the businesses that we, you know, in our, in our city. You could go to the next page. So, you know, what can you expect from us, what can you expect from legal cannabis business? Why, you know, we know that there's a large illegal shops, you know, in Trenton. As we transition into the regulated safe market, you're gonna see a lot of benefits that, you know, maybe you weren't familiar with. Uh, you know, one of the things that we just want to show is what we plan to do with the building. While we do have to separate the space legally from the front of house to the back, that's why you see the wall. This is the view you'll see when you walk in, this is actually our CBD and education area. What you can't see, and you'll see in another picture, is a full-time classroom with classes running all day, every day, almost as if you went into a museum, and you were able to get education, and there'd be little interactive areas. That's something that we have been focused on while enjoying the space, uh, you could go to the next page. So this is the view when you actually go into the regulated THC side, that you, at first, we need a medical card, as a ATC Alternative Treatment Center, which we have, uh, our license is for, we are able to sell to recreational customers. However, in the beginning, just medical. Uh, what you'll see when you come in is that we're utilizing the old teller stations, uh, trying to match the motif from the displays. The trees that you see will actually be our live terpene stations, and I'm really excited about this, what we wanted to do, uh, in cannabis, terpenes are just the essential oils, it's what gives it its smell. But the same terpenes in cannabis are actually found in a ton of other plants that we know, uh, and use on a daily basis. Lemons, lavender, hops. So what we are actually doing is creating live terpene stations right now in the bank, if you pass by. We have two twelve-year-old lemon trees that were growing to, you know, keep until it gets warm and everything gets set. Uh, but having that interactive, uh, you know, another interactive area is what we're going for. And screens that you see throughout, there's not as many as what will actually be there, will be interactive education displays that will give you the ability to input information about yourself, and gain a little bit of information, and send that knowledge directly to your phone or computer, so you can get a little take home. Uh, you could go to the next page. This view is, while as you're leaving the dispensary, this is that CBD education area, but you can see the classroom to the right-hand side. Uh, that's where, again, we will have our classes, because education being paramount to us. We have a ton of higher education classes on our YouTube page, we have been about free education since the beginning, uh, and we want to be able to offer that to anybody, even if you don't have a medical card, you can come in the dispensary, come in the front of house, and get a little bit of education, uh, so it's something we wanted to be able to do. Uh, you go to the next page. Just a little information, because one of the things that we were focused on in the beginning was the parking. While we are all familiar that that area doesn't have as much of large parking, uh, parking lot, but we do have a few assets and a few things we want to utilize around us. We will have s- small onsite parking for veteran and handicap spaces. All employees will park at off-site spaces that we're actually working on right now, um, and a lot close by, that we will have a handicap shuttle available. This will be for picking up customer, or picking up employees, as well as a few other pickup locations around the city in each ward, just to help those customers that can't maybe, uh, get there as quick, or for employees that are city, uh, city residents. It's a way that free we can get them, you know, to our building and allow them not to have to use their own car. But parking has been something we have been concentrated on since the beginning, to make sure that we do not become a burden to the street, the alley behind us, our neighbors, especially the Mill Hill, uh, you know, uh, streets, because they are, you know, something we definitely are con- concentrating on being a good neighbor, uh, so that's something that we're focused on, uh, if you could go to the next page. Three things I wanted to point out, and I mentioned before, the parking, the drive-through that we do have, we do are looking to activate. Uh, we will be, you know, highly, uh, looking at it and strict on making sure, again, that we don't disrupt any flow of traffic, that's important to us. Um, one thing that a lot of people don't realize is there actually is no la- no smell, uh, and no consumption, which is a zero tolerance policy onsite or near. We receive all packages in childproof, smell-proof packaging, we do not open them, we just are, uh, keeping them and passing it off as soon as the actual registered patient that comes in. Uh, safety too, you know, I'll mention about security, but our spaces and cannabis dispensaries are highly regulated. Our cameras are monitored by the state police and the state, uh, Cannabis, uh, Regulatory Commission twenty-four seven. Even if we take too much time in the hallway, we get a call, what is going on? So, there will never be a safety issue, because we are so regulated, and obviously, we're not gonna risk, you know, getting in trouble, and we want to follow all the rules to, to the fullest extent. So there will never be a smell, no consumption in the area, in the dispensary, or around, so there won't be loitering as well. Now, if you're familiar with our location, you might know that garbage, not only just wood, just, uh, people dropping the garbage, but the, the, um, large garbage containers, you know, from our neighbors, that unfortunately, the wind blows. We have been trying to be cognizant of picking up all around us, not just our garbage, because right now, we don't have any, but really trying to keep the area clean between the, uh, cleanups that we do ourselves, having someone there every day cleaning up. Just, if we're outside, we try to, you know, do our part. And also, we want to make sure that there's no cannabis garbage, you know, if we're having these packages, these different glass containers, we want to have the re- relationships with the companies, so we can recycle these materials, so they don't end up on our streets, and we don't, you know, hurt even more while we're trying to help the population. Uh, you could go to the next page. So, security, now, this is something that is extremely important, because you want to make sure that you're, you know, keeping everybody safe, keeping your customers safe, and you ultimately don't want to have any problems. Like I mentioned, our cameras are, uh, required to be able to be accessible by the state police and the CRC. We will have, um, armed personnel onsite that is fully trained, um, past military and police, that does a lot of, uh, work in the area. We will be utilizing the Trent police for all extra work, or anything we need, so that we can, you know, a- again, create partners, so we want to be able to, to utilize them as well. We will be installing additional exterior lighting to help illuminate the street, uh, one of the things that is required, but also, we want to help, you know, widen the block up, when it is nighttime, past five o'clock, you know, there's still, we want still some foot traffic. So, we want to make people feel comfortable and increase the light. Uh, one of the benefits of being a bank, just to be quite honest with you, is that we have the vaults for product and cash. While cash is minimal, to be honest with you, contrary to popular belief, um, product, you know, there is a lot of money to that, and it is important to keep it safe. So, why, you know, I can't share with the call the specifics, uh, I can tell you that a immense amount of timing, planning, and personnel has gone into, and of course, I, you know, can fill anybody in separately, uh, into the security of the building. We will have our security director, Jesse, who's been on site and on the team for the past, uh, four years, basically, uh, with us, very familiar, uh, and has been a help since the beginning, if you go to the next page. So, staffing and job fairs, you know, one of the cornerstones of Wo Flow that we have been talking about is getting a diverse local workforce. From the beginning, we have been trying to get the word out to our neighbors, you know, first. We did have a local job fair where we worked with some local companies, Black Cannabis being one of them, where we were able to get hundreds of applicants. Not all Trenton applicants, but a lot of good Trenton people, we're actually speaking to and finalizing our general manager role, uh, which is a Trent local, so, you know, hopefully, good news to come there. Um, but you can expect us to be hiring between forty and sixty additional employees. Uh, we are one of the largest dispensaries in the New Jersey, uh, but, you know, we do want to be able to give a lot of people opportunities, so we've tried to make our workforce and, um, hours, you know, work, so that we can hire the most amount of people, and be an asset to the community. Again, addressing the problem the world on drugs has created, and creating, you know, uh, generational wealth by teaching other peoples how to be able to do this. So, not only by hiring through internships, but partnerships, outreach, all of the ways that we can and know is responsible, and the ways that people and cannabis companies should be hiring, working with the local unions. We're lucky enough to have a relationship for the past few years with CWA ten thirty-eight, something that we've known since the beginning has been the right thing to do. Uh, and again, as I said, working with Black Cannabis and some of the other local, uh, companies and re- and trade companies, uh, that are in Trenton, we have the ability to pull great workforce, and that's, that's our goal.
Mr. Kutch?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Um, do you want to spend your last five minutes getting an, um, questions from the Council?
Yes.
Remaining?
Yes, sorry, let me, uh, I'll just go in ten, about thirty seconds, I'll just finish up explaining, just the last good things, you know, just the past, next couple slides are really just about cannabis being a good business, you can expect...
You have five minutes left on the clock, sir.
Okay, you can expect a lot of financial benefit, a lot of, uh, a- a- you know, benefits to the neighborhood. I can pass off this, you know, presentation, like I said, but I just want to finish up by saying, our roots come from, uh, you know, people that have been in the industry for over twenty years, legal industry, and makes them some of the first in US, and we, you know, have tried to not make the mistakes some others have. So, I apologize, I threw, threw that a little quick, if there's any questions, you know, for anything, I would be open to answer those.
Do you want to tell the public how they could get more information, sir?
Sure, so, the easiest way to get ahold of us, and actually, you can leave this screen up in maybe the next couple, you know, as I talk, uh, is to go on our website, woflow.com, following us on Instagram, at Wo Flow. And truly, we will just be able to push some of this information through the city's, uh, you know, uh, information boards too, to let everybody what, know what is going on. Currently, we are with the, uh, in the planning and, um, inspection phase with the departments, hoping to wrap that up and begin construction to get open and get everybody hired, uh, but that is the easiest way, or you can email me directly at M K U T C H at woflow.com, that's M Kutch at woflow.com.
Um, is there any council members that have any questions for Mr. Kutch? Council members? Hello?
Council President, I've already had a discussion, um, with the folks from, from Wo Flow, and I've visited the building, and I'm very happy with what they're doing, that's, I don't have any questions.
Thank you, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson, is there anyone that have any questions for Mr. Kutch while he's here, online? Seeing no questions from any other, uh, other, uh, council members, I would like to thank you for your presentation, and I, I wish you mu- much success.
Council President, thank you, everybody, again.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
You may continue with the business.
Certainly. Uh, moving on to the docket, we have, um, we've done approval for the minutes, can we have a motion for, uh, communication, approval of communications and petitions? Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, Ms. Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn? Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkins?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Motion carried. Moving forward to resolutions. We have one item for consent agenda. That item is resolution, I'm sorry? Okay, one moment. Uh if anybody who has a live mic, please mute themselves other than the council, please. Uh moving on to resolution two-two dash four-three-three, resolution reporting the receipt of twenty-eight thousand ninety-one dollars for the city of Trenton. Through an online surplus auction awarded to municipal that awarded to municipal dot com LLC. Through New Jersey State Contract Number T two-five-eight-one nine. Comma nineteen GNSV one zero-zero-six-nine-six. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, roll call the roll, Ms. Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Mister Harrison?
Yes.
Mister Michelle?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn? Ms. Vaughn?
Councilwoman Vaughn, are you muted?
No, I'm not muted.
Okay.
I can't hear Brandon.
You can't hear me?
Yeah, now I can. Uh this is for the consent agenda, correct?
Yes.
I, my vote is yes.
Ms. Wilkins?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Motion carried. Moving to roll call resolutions. Resolution two-two dash four-four-three, resolution authorizing the appropriation of thirty-four thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. From the funds allocated to the city of Trenton under the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty-twenty-one to the African-American Chamber of Commerce. Training and Development Institute. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Uh council president?
Second.
Oh, uh council president?
Yes, go right ahead, this is a vote.
We, no, we were supposed to get some information.
Okay.
Yes, we were about the students and we did not receive the council president.
Alrighty, so based on the fact that you didn't receive.
Madam President, Madam President, the information was sent to the clerk's office. I have the the memo here that was submitted, I don't understand why you didn't get it.
I believe I forwarded everything that I had over from the uh.
So so Mister Garcia, can can you can can you can you attest to the fact that the memo was sent and you sent it to council? Because it sounds like we were not forthcoming with the information where you don't provide this type of uh details.
Okay, I know I sent all of, I sent all information that was forwarded from from administration as of between yesterday and today. Um I did forward those items, some came in this morning and some came in the afternoon yesterday. I can.
Yes, and Madam President, just so that you are aware, the information that was requested was a simple memo specifying that these funds were actually for. Trenton residents, and that is the only thing that needed to be addressed on the memo, and that is actually what the memo says. That in fact, we will go out and ensure that there is an agreement that states that these individuals receiving these funds. Uh will continue to live in the city of Trenton for as long as they are receiving the funding for this one class.
Thank you, Mister.
President.
That um miss um, so first, let me, let me just clear something up before we go any further. First of all, I would like for anyone that wants to speak to address the chair. And second of all, I would like for you to understand that the chair needs to yield the floor to you. Um and with that being said, we're gonna move on um to Councilwoman Vaughn, I mean Councilwoman Wilkins. Um she has the floor right now?
Council president, um we asked Mister Cruz a little more detail than that. We ask uh with regards to uh Trenton students um and the schools that the students were attending. Uh for the funding, uh they were giving their, so uh there was stating on the resolution. It was stated that these were scholarships for uh students in the Trenton Public School System. To get specific training on uh specific uh specialties. I mean, we did not receive that information, I have not received it. And uh where we are right now in terms of trying to get additional information and read it, you know, it would be more time consuming. I mean, I would prefer if we got the detailed information that we asked for and then uh to vote. If the administration um wants to go ahead and move forward, then they can. But it was actually more specific in regards to the Trenton School System students. That's all I have to say, thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Um and any other council member like to speak before we take this to the vote? Cause this is, this is the vote.
Yes, yes, yes. Um uh uh council president may I have the floor?
Yes, go right ahead.
Yes, and I just wanted to add to that, um and I and uh including the student, the school that the, well, I don't see how we can go on. I I wanna table this because if we didn't get the information, if Mister Garcia can't bring it up and we can't see. What um council wo- wo- Councilwoman Wilkins and myself asked for, then there's no reason to go to the vote. Or we can go and we could just go and go and vote it down, cause I'm not gonna vote for it, cause you know, I I need the information. I wanna ensure that it goes to these young people in Trenton. And I wanna know who are the um the 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 very unfortunate uh individuals. Uh who that, you know, that that's gonna be supported by this um this funding. So we wanna know, we wanna know that, you know, we wanna uh honor them and uh. Uh and 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 praise them that, you know, that the city and and their state has allocated funding to continue their education and growth and future. And we're investing in their future and the city of Trenton wanna know these two kids. So where where who are they?
If you'll give me one moment, I can try and bring up what was sent and what was forwarded. Is that okay? I'm sorry.
Yes, while you're doing that, we're gonna move on to the next roll call.
Uh certainly, I needed to stop sharing the screen in order to bring up the other item. But uh the next resolution is resolution two-two dash four-two-six. Resolution authorizing settlement of civil action in the matter of Robert King v. City of Trenton. In total amount of three thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents.
So moved.
Second.
I'm I'm sorry, um I can't see the, what happened?
He took, he had to take the screen down to look for the information that um uh Councilwoman Wilkins and yourself requested. But what I wanted to say in the, for the um compensation pieces and everything that was discussed. I will uh be abstaining from any um compensation matter that was discussed in executive session. I wasn't there to actually hear the details of any of the reports, so I'll be abstaining from those votes, Mister Garcia.
Understood. I am currently trying to bring up the items that were, that were uh sent to me. Uh if you, council president, if you'd like me to move on, I can.
Yeah, well, we, they, they definitely want to see that, so is there any, you have two computers there in your room. Do you need to take the screen to uh pitch black in order to?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to do, but I'm I'm trying to look, I'm trying to grab and retrieve the items. But I don't, I also don't wanna just impede the flow of the meeting. Would it be okay if you came back to this resolution at the end of the?
Yes, yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. I'll go ahead and share my screen again for the purposes of the meeting. Okay, moving on to, so we are at resolution two-two dash four-two-six, correct?
Yes, we are.
And uh we, is there a, are we moving to roll?
Moving to the vote, moving to the vote.
No, I know it was moved and seconded and there was discussion for a roll call vote.
Yes.
Mister Harrison?
Yes.
Mister Michelle?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
This is for two-two four-two-six, correct?
Correct.
Uh my vote is yes.
Ms. Wilkins?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Abstain.
Noted, motion carried. Moving on, resolution two-two dash four-two-eight, resolution authorizing settlement of workers' compensation claim in the matter of Rodney Washington v. City of Trenton. Claim petition number two-O-one dash eleven fifty-five-seven-nine. Twenty-fourteen dash and twenty-fourteen dash eleven five-eighty-one in the claim amount of ten thousand dollars. Including court reporter fees. Is there a second? Oh well, it's been moved and seconded. Call the roll, Ms. Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Mister Harrison?
Yes.
Mister Michelle?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkins?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Abstain.
Noted, motion carried. Moving on, resolution two-two dash four-three-zero, resolution authorizing an amendment to increase the contract. Which was awarded to Weiner Law Group LLP by way of resolution two-two dash two-seven-one. To provide professional legal services regarding general municipal litigation and other le- legal matters. Through a fair and open process and an amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars in accordance with NJSA nineteen forty-four eight. Twenty point five at sec for the period covering January first twenty-twenty-two to December thirty-first twenty-twenty-two.
Uh council president?
This has to be, has to be a motion, it has to be second.
There a motion?
I have a question. I don't think that was, uh we didn't have that on our docket.
That is exactly right.
That was postponed, I believe, until the next meetings.
My apologies, was this postponed and pu- this was pulled, this was an item that was pulled by by legal, I imagine then.
Yes.
Understood, is it?
You should, you should have that in writing um from legal.
Okay.
But um please make.
Resolution.
Please make sure that that is part of your minutes when they're provided for the public.
Will do.
Madam President, Adam Cruz, Business Administrator.
Yes, go right ahead, Mister Cruz.
Thank you.
Uh Mister Cruz is speaking right now, Mister uh Bridges, um Mister Cruz, after he's finished.
Uh thank you, Madam President. Um I'm, I I would hate to see a resolution uh four-four-three um. Uh fail, so I am going to request uh to pull it and.
Where we at?
Yeah, twenty-two four. Yeah, that, that's the one where uh the the memo was requested and it cannot be found. Uh I'm going to be pulling it, and that is actually for the ARPA fund for the thirty-four.
Mister Cruz, Mister Cruz, now, you know, you could have waited till we went back to here because we were on four dash um. Excuse me, twenty-two dash four-thirty, and I'm thinking that you wanted to add something to that and you put somewhere altogether different. And we'll, we're, we're coming back to that, Mister Cruz, so hold on to that thought till we get there, okay?
All right, thank you.
Alrighty, so um twenty-two dash four-thirty, um that one was uh pulled. By the administration, by the law department, we're on twenty-two dash four-thirty-one right now, Mister Garcia.
Certainly.
Continue.
Resolution two-two dash four-three-one, resolution authorizing settlement of a worker's comp- compensation claim in the matter of Rodney Washington versus City of Trenton. Claim petition number twenty-fifteen dash thirteen four-eight-six in the claim amount of thirteen thousand nine hundred seventeen dollars and twenty cents. Including attorney fees and costs. Is there a second?
Um Ms. Caldwell-Wilson seconded, Ms. Wilkins uh motioned.
Noted, uh roll call, Ms. Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Mister Harrison?
Yes.
Mister Michelle?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Uh yes.
Ms. Wilkins?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Um abstaining.
Noted, motion carried, moving to resolution two-two dash four-four-one. Resolution authorizing settlement of a civil action in the matter of Ricardo Ramos versus City of Trenton. In total amount of thirty thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Second, I'll call the roll, Ms. Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Mister Harrison?
Yes.
Mister Michelle?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Councilwoman Vaughn, are you muted?
Ms. Wilkins?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Abstain.
Okay. We have four that motion will carry, Ms. Vaughn, just in case, come back to you. Noted. Resolution two-two dash four-two-two, resolution of the city of Trenton demonstrating proof of local support for some. Suitability of a cannabis dispensary facility operated by Low Flow LLC. At two-two six, two twenty-two twenty-six South Broad Street, Trenton, New Jersey.
So moved.
Second.
Excuse me, council president?
Mm-hmm, yes, go right ahead, council.
They, they pulled this resolution on Tuesday.
No, I don't have it pulled.
It was pulled.
No.
Hold on a second.
Mister Garcia, we're.
Mister Garcia, please confirm it, cause, thank you.
Council president, if I may, Director Bridges?
I see here, okay.
Uh hold on, Mister um Councilwoman Wilkins had a question to the clerk, he's trying to determine.
I'm sorry, the resolution number again?
Four-four-two.
Four-four-two what?
Twenty-two dash four-four-two.
Two, thank you.
Right here.
I have your roll call.
Yeah, I have roll call written except to.
I thought it was pulled because it wasn't a presentation, because we didn't have any discussion of it on Tuesday, but it's okay.
Okay.
Alrighty.
If I could address that?
Yes, go right ahead, Mister uh Bridges.
No, I just was clarifying for Councilwoman Wilkins that what was pulled from the, on Tuesday was the um, a different lawsuit. Related to a settlement matter that there was no, that the council not receive the memorandum and backup stuff, so that, that's what was pulled from, from the meeting on Tuesday.
Oh, okay, I thought it was this one. Okay, thank you.
There was another item I I'm, that was mentioned too, I believe, that was. Supposed to be.
We're in the middle of a vote.
All right, we're Mister.
Noted. Okay, so where are we here? We are at.
We're at twenty-two dash four-forty-two, the resolution for the uh, the proof of support for su- uh suitability. Of a cannabis dispensary facility operated by Low Flow.
I believe we're a roll call, right?
Yes, we are.
Ms. Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Mister Harrison?
Yes.
Mister Michelle?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Are we up yet now?
We're at the uh dispensary facility.
Oh yeah, um council president, may I say something?
Well, we're in the middle of the vote right now, Councilwoman, you need to place your vote, cast your vote.
Oh, uh I just wanted to see whether the attachment was here, cause that's why it was roll call.
They made a presentation tonight.
Yeah, I know, I'm talking about the attachment from the uh cannabis advisory committee.
Do you want me to put that on the screen?
Yes, if you have it.
Yeah, if you have it, but I just also wanted to be attached to the resolution. It it, is it gonna be attached to the resolution, um Mister Garcia?
It'll be attached as backup, yes.
Yeah, okay, terrific, that's why, I just wanted to confirm that.
Okay.
And my vote is yes.
Thank you. Ms. Wilkins?
Yes.
And Ms. McBride?
Abstaining.
Noted. Motion carried, resolution two-two dash four-three-six, resolution accepting a bid and awarding a contract to IBN Construction Corp. For demolitions of various structures on Suites and Fountain Avenue under the neighborhood redevelopment and re- revitalization program. And that work shall be complete within ninety to calendar days from notice to proceed. An amount not to exceed two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars, bid number two-zero-two-two dash five-oh.
Mister, Mister, Mister Garcia?
Yes.
Um, um during review, it was in like the last minute, but this particular resolution here was. Uh voted down. uh, voted down, so I didn't catch it, but you should have caught it, um, you need to go back to your paperwork, it shouldn't even be on the docket.
From the last docket?
This was voted down, um, the two hundred and ninety thousand dollars for the, um, for this particular company, IBN. So, um, it shouldn't even be on the docket, um, I, I didn't catch it at the review.
Okay, I'll check.
Yes, we, yes, that does not need to be even voted on, it shouldn't be on the docket because it was already voted down early on. Um, please, uh, find that, Mister Garcia.
I will.
Alrighty, and we can move on to twenty two dash four thirty eight.
Resolution two two dash four thirty eight, resolution authorizing application and acceptance of a grant from the hazardous discharge site remediation fund public entity program through the New Jersey Economic Development Authority, NJEDA, and the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, NJDEP, to conduct a remedial, remedial investigation at the former New Method Cleaner Site, three hundred to three ten Prospect Street, block four, four oh two, lots five, six, and six point zero one in Trenton, New Jersey.
Needs to be moved.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Uh, yes, Mister Michelle was.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, March.
Excuse me, Count- Councilwoman Caldwell Wilson, is that you?
Yes, um, Mister Cruz, I had asked various questions of JR Capasso the other night on this, but I didn't get any follow-up information explaining why this, why we approved over two million dollars for cleanups and this property was included in it, and now we're doing it separately, and then I was told that we had to change EPA or somebody wanted to see, to adjust the resolution, but and then I wasn't quite clear from the two million dollar grant who had been paid what and whether they had been paid anything or is this money, this is for an additional grant, so it's very confusing.
Right, this is us asking for additional money to continue with the cleanup because the money that we got was definitely not enough, that some of these grants that we get are actually piecemeal to continue with the cleanups as we go along because the jobs are so big that, uh, it requires several fundings uh, to get some of these sites, uh, just to a level that is acceptable for certain uses.
So, so, so Mister Cruz, I'm, I'm not opposed to getting this work done. What I'm confused about is, like I said, in two thousand eighteen, there was a two million dollar application and acceptance of a hazardous discharge, um, site rem- remediation fund grant. And part of, uh, there was a number of facilities there, and this facility was on that. So, did we spend money on that facility or are we taking that off of the previous resolution and amending that? I mean, I don't know. I mean, this is just, it's just very confusing.
Yeah, I, I don't know if Mister, uh, Capasso is on tonight, uh, or is the director on tonight to answer that question?
Yeah, but you know, well, I, I, I just, I can't, I want, I want to support this, I want to vote for this, but I'm, I'm, I'm just confused with the monies because you already received money for this.
So, so it would have been, it would have been nice, Mister Cruz, if Mister Capasso could have had one attached to this, uh, to this resolution, the two million dollars that had actually been awarded for the, for the cleanups and how much of that money had actually went to this site based on the fact that this site was on that list. And so, we're, you're asking for us to accept another grant, which we shouldn't have a problem accepting the other grant, but how much of the money from the first, uh, two million was actually spent on this project? So, the Councilwoman wanted to see that, and it should have been attached to the resolution, so it would be not just clear to her, but clear to the public and clear to anyone else that looks at this resolution in the very near future.
Yeah, I, I was not provided that information, uh, Madam President, what I have here is, um, the documentation that you have in front of you for additional, uh, requests to apply for this grant. Um, it, it will not cost the city any money. Uh, and when you look at the documentation, it clearly states that this site remediation is, is gonna cost as an estimated one to two million dollars. So, as I mentioned before, as we come across, because the city does not have the funding to clean the sites like this, we
That's yes, we, and we under, and we understand all of that, Mister Cruz, but we also, but we, but we also wanna keep up and track the dollar amounts that are being spent out of the grants, so if there was a grant for two million and this was listed as one of the sites, how much of that two million was spent toward the one point, um?
Yes, yeah, I, I, I am looking at all, yeah, I, I am looking at the My apologies, yes, I was actually looking at the documentation, just to try to see if there is a, a number that, that I can give you.
Excuse me, Council President?
Mister Cruz, I'm not finished yet, folks. So, Mister, Mister Cruz, um, it's just a matter of fiscal bootkeeping, I mean, just so that we understand. You know, what we spent out of that, that other, uh, grant and what we spent out of this because they are listed on both of them, and, and that's really what I wanted to know.
Right, and, and I don't recall, Councilwoman, you asking for that number, I know that, uh, the conversation ended where Mister Capasso stated that two sentences needed to be changed or added to the resolution.
That I understand.
Right.
But I don't know if they looked to see the previ- that they were on a previous resolution. You know, I mean, I, I understand that, I just, I'm just concerned about this cleaner site in Prospect. And we wanna get it cleaned up, but, and I know it's, it's not costing the city any money, that's not the point. The point is that we need a paper trail, and we need to understand, so the previous resolution really should have been noted on here. And if any money had been spent out of it, this is addition or whether you didn't draw down for it, that's all I'm asking.
Yeah, and unfortunately, Councilwoman, like you, I don't have that number, and since that was not brought up at the meeting, I was not prepared to provide you that number tonight, um, I don't know if the director, uh, I know he was present during roll call. I don't know if he has that number with him at this time of the day.
So, Mister Cruz, if I can ask you this, if, 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 if the administration can pull this, I'll even be willing to come in and sit down with you and JR, so we
That's fine. I, I, I can do that, that's not a problem.
So, I withdraw my motion.
Um, Mister Michelle would have to withdraw the second. Councilman Michelle?
Yes.
You, you seconded that motion, could you withdraw your mo- your second?
Yes.
Alrighty, Mister, Mister Garcia?
Yes.
Um, Councilwoman withdrew her motion, this resolution is gonna be pulled by the administration, and Councilwoman Caldwell Wilson is going to have a conversation with JR Capasso and Mister Cruz, and when this comes back on the next docket, all of the information and the resolution should be attached, um, pertaining to the previous grant, how much of it was spent and how much, um, was spent on this particular project.
Mister Cruz, could you please set up that meeting?
Yes, will do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Alrighty, moving right along. Dash four thirty nine.
Four thirty nine, resolution authorizing contract awarded to Golden Crown Contractors for facility repairs and window replacements at the Briggs Branch Library, previously approved by resolution number twenty one dash four five five from the American Rescue Plan Act adopted October twenty first, twenty twenty one, awarded through the County Mer- County of Mercer Cooperative Contract Purchasing System Agreement CK oh nine Mercer twenty twenty one dash fourteen in amount not to exceed eighty one thousand three hundred and four dollars.
So moved, Mister, hm, Mister, uh, Mister Garcia, um, who was the second, I moved it, who was the second?
I have Miss Caldwell Wilson as the second.
Um, I would like to just say, um, to Mister Cruz, uh, thank you, because this is what Councilwoman Caldwell Wilson is speaking to to the previous resolution, the fact that you included where the money was coming from, what, uh, when the resolution was voted on. Thank you, Mister Cruz, for this information, that's what she wanted to see on the other.
Okay.
We may go to the vote.
Miss Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mister Harrison?
Yes.
Mister Michelle?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn? Ms. Vaughn? May have lost Ms. Vaughn, Ms. Wilkins?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Motion carried, resolution two two dash four three four, resolution accepting a bid and award, awarding a contract to Calgon Carbon Corporation for the furnish and delivery of powdered ac- ac- powdered activated carbon for a period of one year from November fourth, twenty twenty two to November third, twenty twenty three, in amount not to exceed eight hundred and three thousand four hundred dollars, bid twenty twenty two dash five six.
So moved.
Second.
Noted. Um, roll call, Miss Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mister Harrison?
Yes.
Mister Michelle?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn? Ms. Wilkins?
No vote.
Miss Mc- Miss McBride?
I'm abstaining from this, uh, cause I, I'm, I'm abstaining.
Noted, motion failed. Resolution two two dash four three five, resolution accepting a bid and awarding contract to Herman's Trucking for the furnish and delivery of three-quarter clean stone backfill materials for a period of one year from November fourth, twenty twenty two to November third, twenty twenty three, in amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty nine thousand four hundred dollars, bid twenty twenty two dash five five.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Miss Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mister Harrison?
Yes.
Mister Michelle?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn? Ms. Wilkins?
No vote.
Ms. McBride?
I'm not need to vote, but I don't even know what the clean, uh, clean stone backfill is. She's, that puts me at a disadvantage.
Ma- Madam President, would you like for me to?
I, I can't in the middle of the vote, so, hm, I, I'll go, hm, I'll go ahead and give this my vote, but, um, Mister, uh, I'm just a little you know, concerned about what clean stone backfill is, I know it's some type of material that we using, but
Yes, I can explain to you after your vote or before the vote, Madam President, whichever you like.
Uh, I would really like to know exactly what the clean stone backfill is.
Yes.
What the material is.
Yes, so normally, Madam President, when there are, um, uh, excavations that take place throughout the, the water system, uh, you cannot, uh, go back and reuse the same dirt that you pull from the dig, you have to bring new fill uh, to actually refill the holes, uh, you know, to bring it to the levels required before we do the blacktop or cement.
Okay.
And that is what the clean backfill means.
I got you, thanks a lot, I appreciate that. Yes, so my, my vote will be yes.
Noted, motion carried, resolution two two dash, excuse me, where are we? Resolution two two dash three four zero, resolution accepting a bid and awarding a contract to Pacific Star Corporation for the furnishing and delivery of laboratory chemi- chemical supplies for a period of one year from November fourth, twenty twenty two to November third, twenty twenty three, in an amount not to exceed one hundred and two thousand, one hundred and thirty eight thousand ninety cents, bid twenty twenty two dash five nine.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Miss Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mister Harrison?
Yes.
Mister Michelle?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkins?
No vote.
Ms. McBride?
Yes, I'll, yes.
Motion carried. That is all my resolutions, we're gonna move back, are we moving back or is the, uh?
Uh, Mister, Mister Cruz is gonna chime in now, in reference to what the administration would like to do with the, uh, resolution twenty two dash four, four, three, Mister Cruz?
Uh, yes, uh, Madam President, uh, the, I, I, I would hate for this thirty four thousand four hundred and fifty dollar ARP funding uh, uh, grant, uh, to fail, so I am requesting counsel, uh, that we, well, administration is requesting that we pull this resolution and we will present it back, uh, uh, at the next council meeting. Uh, the, the memo was prepared, was sent, and, um, apparently, it, 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 it didn't make it to you, uh, on, uh, on time, I guess, uh, and so, uh, I
Mister Garcia is riding on the wrong line, he should be at four, four, he should be at twenty two dash four, four, three.
That is correct.
Uh, four, three, three, four, four, three, excuse me.
Four, 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 three, yes. Mm-hmm, so, um, that is being, hm, that is being pulled by the administration.
And, and Madam President, that, that resolution, um, twenty two, four, thirty four, I know the vote was taken, it failed, uh, three to two, but this one is actually the carbon that we use at the filtration plant, as you all know, we pool twenty eight million gallons of water per day from the river. And this carbon is actually what we use in the, in the filters for the water that is coming out of the river, just like when you have a fish tank, you need
So Mister Cruz, what we could do is, we can, um, we can, um, put that back on for the next, uh, docket. I will, um, I'll make exceptions to bring it back and let the council vote on it on the, the next docket, okay?
Okay, appreciate that, thank you.
Alrighty, um, with all of that being said, it, the, we are finished with, uh, the, uh, agenda. I would like to open it up for public comment. Mister Garcia?
Are there any members, yes, are there any members of the public that wish to speak?
Yes, Mary Horn?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, just, uh, uh, two quick questions, please, thank you very much, um, uh, just like to know where we're at with the lead line replacement, at what percent or how far are we gone, uh, with the lead line? And what we can expect, and, uh, also, I'd like to know, uh, where are we with the, uh, traffic comming solutions for Oakland, Marlin, Huff, Oliver, Brenton, Hoffman Avenue, Cowwater Terrace, and the West Ward, which we petitioned several years ago to get it done, and as of yet, we see, I see where it's been done all around us, but we haven't gotten that done yet. Can I get some answers with that, thank you very much.
Mister, um, Mister Garcia, if you would, um, forward her questions over to the, um, appropriate departments so she could, um, have some answers, uh, by tomorrow afternoon, I'd appreciate it. Um, she wants to know about the speed bumps, and she wants to know about the lead line replacement and where we are with the lead line replacement.
Will do.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Uh, next I see is Miss, is the Mister Kutch?
Uh, Mister Kutch, go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam President, for the floor, I, I just wanted to say thank you again to the governing body, all of the people that have been involved. Truly is a historic day for Trenton, uh, we plan on being a, the best, best business partner we can be to the entire city and a model for what good cannabis business should be, so again, I wanna thank everybody, we are completely an open book, so if anybody has info or, uh, question, anything you would like to, uh, ask me or the others, please stop by one day as well, uh, thank you very much and have a great one.
Thank you. Next person, Mister Garcia?
Yes, I see here, Injustice Anywhere?
Go right ahead, Injustice, could you give us your name and your address?
Sure, my name is Aparna Chowdhury, Miss Chowdhury, and my address, uh, of my business is nine forty six Greenwood. And, um, can you hear me, by the way?
Yes, we can.
Um, thank you, um, I just wanted to say, um, that some of the kind of things that are happening in Trenton are upsetting, so it's hard to know where to start, but I thought that a good, you know, jump off point is, um, one of L.A. Parker's recent columns on the minimization of crime um, through some, you know, questionable smoke tactics that are used by polit- um, through some, you know, questionable smoke tactics that are used by politicians and, uh, police departments, uh, to make it look like cities are safer than they actually are. Um, I think that the PR goal of it is understandable. Well, you know, we do want Trent to look better, uh, we want Trent to be presented in a, you know, outward-facing manner, um, you know, where we can highlight, uh, the assets. However, um, it's, the flip side of it is dangerous because we have a lack of real knowledge of what's happening, um, with our crime, and I think that it is part of a larger suppression of information that happens. But I think the more important, uh, point about suppression of information is what I saw happen the other day, uh, or heard, rather, happen at, um, a council meeting. Um, I was shocked, really, literally shocked, to see council members shut down civic comment. Um, as a member of the public, I, I, I'm accustomed to some level of suppression. Um, there's some level of silencing that goes on, you know, but to see that level of silencing go on at a public forum, in a public meeting, um, I think is, uh, really, really, uh, questionable and, and shocking. Um, I wanted to point out that, um, pub- civic comment serves multiple, mul- multiple ends, and one of them is not for the other members of council. It's not about their time and whether they wanna quit a meeting early. Civic comment is an essential part, it's an essential, uh, factor in where members of the public are able to hear our politicians, our elected members, and get to flesh out what their platform policies are, what, where they stand on certain issues through their, through their comments, as well as through their silence, which is at times resounding. Um, their, their lack of reaction to what happens, uh, in Trenton. So I think that, eh, you know, silencing other council members or choosing to, to not, uh, permit civic comment to go forward, um, i- i- it's unacceptable, and, and frankly, I don't understand how it's legal. Um, the argument that was given, which was a little bit illogical, was that public comment is publicly advertised, but civic comment is somehow not. In fact, civic comment is publicly advertised. It's right there on the docket along with the other parts of the meetings. Um, it, it, it's an essential part of our public discourse, and to see it shut down in such an unceremonious manner, um, was really concerning to me. I think that any level of censorship and any level of silencing in any public manner, um, and I'm broader on this than other people are, I, I think it's all dangerous. I think it's always dangerous when you silence members. The only place you can silence somebody is in the privacy of your own private property. On the street, on the sidewalk, and in public forums, everyone gets to speak. Um, and, and I, I found it very disturbing and very shocking. Freedom of speech is one of the most sacred rights here in the U.S. It's a profound and essential cornerstone of public discourse. Um, and, and, and to see it, yeah, and, and it's particularly important, by the way, for minorities. Uh, minorities don't always have economic power, they don't always have judicial, well, they certainly don't have judicial power. Um, the arms of justice work very differently with minorities. We rarely have access to, uh, policing or law in the same manner that others sometimes do. But one of the sacred rights in America has always been at least the freedom of speech, and, um, I think silencing is, um, is a real problem. Um, I hope that, I, I don't think that, I don't think the people that did it understood the kind of dangerous precedents that they're setting. Um, civic comment and public comment are not optional. If someone does not wanna hear comments, you're welcome to turn off the audio, which I'm sure some people already have. Um, you don't have to listen to what someone says, but you have no right to silence anybody, and to silence people on a public forum was, um, was a very disturbing, um, I hope it's a first, um, and I also hope it's a last. Um, the majority doesn't get to silence the minority, whatever the vote turned out to be. Um, and, and I'm, I would be curious to have some of the legal people there, um, comment on the legality of it. It, it was publicly advertised. Why, why didn't it happen? Um, and, and you're on a slippery slope, um, if you silence anybody who, who comes forth, uh, just to present their opinions. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person, Mister Garcia?
Um, I, are there any member, I see no other hands. Are there any members from the phones?
Yes. I'm on the phone.
Got it. Go right ahead. State your name, please, for the record.
I'm Faith Ann Pearson, and like the woman just said, uh, I happen to wholeheartedly believe what she said pertaining to the civil comment. Most important, this was an election year. Civil comments mean the difference between electing an individual because of how they speak about certain things going on in the city. I also have a question referencing the ordinance twenty-two, four, twenty-seven. It was skipped over. By any chance, was it pulled? And if so, I'm sorry, uh, but as you were going down the, uh, resul- the ordinances pertaining to the, um, uh, civic, as well as the workman's comp, that no- that particular ordinance was not listed, so it was not voted on. Um, last but not least, I'm sorry to hear so many of yous didn't get re-elected, um, and coming up now noticing that there's supposed to be a runoff election. Um, I, all I can say is the residents and the public has spoken with their vote on how they feel the city council and the mayor's handles the city. Thank you.
Is there any other, uh, persons on the phone, Mister Garcia?
Are there any other members on the phone that wish to speak? I'm hearing non-council president.
Alrighty, um, I'll make a motion to close public, uh, comment.
Second.
Roll call Ms. Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Wilkins?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Well, I will move to open up the civic comment, and I will start with Councilwoman Wilkins.
Yes, thank you, Council President. Um, first and foremost, I'd like to thank everyone for coming on the call. Thank you, uh, for your civic duty. Uh, we appreciate you, uh, very much. Uh, what I wanted to state is I just wanted to state very briefly about also what occurred on Tuesday. I was really shocked to actually be in the midst of the civic comments being shut down, especially when Mister Kaloji, who is our, um, the council's, uh, legal counsel, gave an opinion with regard to civic comments. It's shameful when, you know, we may not always agree, but it's shameful when you can't even give your, uh, civic comments to the residents, uh, the city that you serve, that you can't speak to them and speak with regard to what concerns them, uh, where you stand with what concerns them, and anything that is currently going on that affects them. And I, um, I was in absolute shock when it took place, and it's shameful because there are my colleagues on this, uh, council that constantly say that we should be ashamed of ourselves, of the things, uh, and how we vote and the things that we say and the things that we do. But now, I, 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 I throw the ball back in your court. You should be ashamed of how you decided because you didn't want to say anything, or you didn't have anything to say to the public that it was fair for you to, to stifle or to shut down any other council member that might wanted to address the residents and, uh, the city and the taxpayers. Uh, and like the, uh, Miss Aparna, uh, stated, there are people that want to hear from the council members. We, you know, people may not always agree with what we say, how we vote, what we do, but there are people that wanna actually hear what it is that we have to say with regard to, uh, the city. And it's important for us to give a report. It's like our report of what we have gone over, what's currently going on, current events, anything that has happened in the past, or, um, any future events that are going on. You know, we, we tend to list a lot of things that are, um, you know, current events that are coming up. Current events are great because they're great for the, for the, uh, for the residents, but also uh, the issues and, and, and how, you know, the council members feel about certain issues is just as important as events or, or, or anything else for that, for that matter. But I just wanted to state that, and, uh, secondly, I wanted to make a statement with regard to because uh, we're constantly being told we didn't approve the city's budget. No, we didn't. But more importantly, instead of it being stated that we didn't approve the budget, what we didn't approve was for the residents, uh, and the taxpayers of the city to get a tax increase. But what's so strange about that is that we actually got the tax increase back in October. And that's well before the budget was even passed. That's well before anything with regard, the, uh, twenty-four million dollars with the school district was even, uh, voted on, and I believe it may have even been prior to the court order. Because I got a, I got a tax increase in October. I had the documentation to prove it. I had to, uh, pay my, uh, mortgage company additional monies for a shortage in my escrow for taxes. And I'm sure that other residents in the city have had tax increases, and if you haven't seen them yet, you will see them. Because this city has received a tax increase. And it's a tax increase on the homeowners. So, you know, you say we didn't approve the budget, but what we didn't approve is we didn't approve for tax increases for the taxpayers of the city of Trenton. The budget, during the process, we made notation and we had even made mention that there were portions of the budget that was missing. But no one likes to talk about that. No one likes to talk about the transition year from July to December of twenty twenty-one. It was totally omitted from the entire budget during the budget process, during the budget, uh, uh, present, well, we got a summary of the presentation, but it wasn't even mentioned, but it was mentioned at the end.
Mister Garcia, what is going on here?
As somebody who is not muted, but I'm looking for it, I can't find it now.
But why, um, her, her, she's been taken off the screen and she's been silenced?
I'm here, Council President.
Continue.
But, um, what was, oh, the transition year. No one wants to talk about the millions of dollars that was spent in the transition year. But it's all accounted for because it was there, but no one likes to bring light of it. There was a transition year for every department in the city for the entire budget. But everyone likes to say, oh, the council didn't pass the budget, they didn't pass the budget. Oh, they're not allowing spending. Spending never stopped in the city of Trenton. Bills never got paid. They never stopped being paid. The employees never stopped receiving their salaries, you know, people never stopped getting paid. But if you're gonna tell, tell it all, say they didn't increase taxes for the city, for the taxpayers. Say that. Give the full story. Not a portion of it. And as a matter of fact, hopefully, at the next go-round, as to whatever happens coming toward the future, give the full budget and not impartiality. Be transparent to the residents, be transparent to the taxpayers. It's their budget. They're actually paying for the budget for what we do here. We need to stop being deceitful because it's deceitful when you don't tell everything. There are portions that like to be notated, but the full story is never told. And guess what? We get to tell it during civic comments. Being silenced and stifled is shameful and is disrespectful. Thank you, Council President. That's all I have to say. I thank you very much, and again, thank you all for joining the call.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
Yes, and I, and I will concur with, uh, Councilwoman Wilkins, as well as, um, one of our, uh, civically engaged constituents who take her time out, uh, Miss Aparna, uh, Chowdhury, on her comments. Um, yeah, we, we all fall short of the privilege to serve the city. And we've all been given an opportunity to do so over the past four years. And some of, some of us have been held accountable and have been, um, and, and, and have been wrongfully and biasly, uh, uh, disparaged, uh, undermined, attacked, uh, um, and, um, and, uh, unequally measured. Same standard that's been applied to myself, Councilwoman Wilkins, Councilman Rodriguez, Councilman Jerel Blakely, President, Council President McBride. If you look back over the past four years, shameful. You look at the media coverage. There's never, you wouldn't even think that Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson, George Michelle, and Joe, and Joe Harris is even on the council. So, it's very strange, odd that Mayor Gussior uh, has strategically called out people of color and has used his influence in the media to disparage each and every one of us. And, uh, you know, everyone on this call knows to be true. They say, oh, Mayor Gussior has said constantly, he can't do anything. He can't get anything done because of the council. Well, the council of the city of Trenton makes up seven individuals. We're one-seventh of a vote. It's mathematically impossible for one, two, even three people to sabotage Mayor Gussior in his, in his nonexistent plan. Every citizen in this city is honest and really listening, can look past their biases, would see who does, who has been doing the work. There's no evidence of any work coming out of that administration. Nothing but bitterness, nastiness, divisiveness. You uh, see nothing. You walk around the neighborhoods of the city, you see nothing. High taxes. He raised those taxes. He delayed that budget and then went over to the state. Who's the, who's, we're under a MOU supposedly, right? And we're supposed to be held to fiscal responsibility. They have done nothing but give Mayor Gussior a pass. And he, and he and the state have the audacity to say it's the council. Which council members? It's the cause of the fact that Mayor Gussior can't be suc- successful. Which ones? Oh, Kathy and Robin. Two-seventh of a body. I hope everyone knows that it takes four votes, majority, to pass a resolution or, or ordinance. Five in some cases, supermajority. We live in a democracy. And yeah, our democracy is under attack all across this nation. We see it in our elections, under attack, silencing the voters, sil- silencing civic comments by certain, by certain populations against other populations. Inequalities, inequalities all across the city, all across the county, the state. And they think people don't know, and people don't see it, and people don't recognize it. Some of us are more vocal than others. And then for those individuals who are more vocal are the ones that they attack and try to shut down and try. are the ones that they attack and try to shut down and try to uh limit their voices. So I'm gonna say, hey, I show up every day. It's gonna take a lot to shut me down and limit my voice. I live in a city, I'm paying taxes, I vote here, I live here. I don't have to lie about it, I don't have to cheat about it. Those are the facts. I'm eligible to be serving in my government. I'm here for Trenton, I'm here for myself, my family. I'm not here to cheat and rob and fleece. So civic comments, shame on my three other council members. They know who they are, and they know what they do, and they know why they do it. So all I have to say is that it ain't Kathy and Robin is, is the reason for Gussior's failures. Gussior had majority vote on this council for uh the majority of his tenure from twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. He had four votes with Councilman Blakely, with Councilman George, George uh Michelle, with Councilman Harrison and Councilwoman Caldwell Wilson, four votes. He could have moved his policy, he moved his policies, he moved his plan, wh- whatever that was, because the city never received it. And he, and he won't, and he, he's never gonna deliver it. His plan is only to give his friends the money and the real estate of this city, period. He's not gonna hire Trentonians, he's not gonna contract with them, he's not gonna give them homeownership opportunity, he's not gonna give them education and training opportunities, he's not gonna give them good paying jobs so they can have, so they can have an econo- change their economic status. He ain't gonna, he's not gonna do any of that. And he knows for sure that Councilwoman Robin Vaughn knows that he's not gonna do it. I will hold him accountable as a citizen. And uh, and I will continue to work on behalf of the city, no matter what capacity I am. So I'm just telling everybody that uh this guy sits around and give press, uh press releases about crap, it's just lies.
Mr. Garcia?
And, and I'm not, I'm not done yet because my seconds are still.
They put the screen black on you, Councilwoman, and I wanna know why.
So here it is.
I think, I didn't control that.
So, so press conferences, I mean, press releases, mis- mis- misinformation and disinformation by Mayor Gussior all day, every day. Press releases about the council, two people. Folks, it takes four votes. He had them, and he still has them today, four votes. So Kathy and Robin, Robin and Santiago Darby couldn't have done it. So he's been lying to you all. And if anybody would believe that, need to go back to elementary school and learn arithmetic. Takes four votes, my friends, and it has always been an attack on the black and brown people on the council. You would think we're the only ones on here. I wanna hear just one negative comment about any of the, my three white colleagues. It's never happened. Hold them to the same standard that you have held us to. So, and I would just say about his press releases, every citizen in this city, hold him accountable. Where's his press release? He's always talking about the press release to get the money, to get the money out of the city, out of your household. Your dollars going out the city every day, all day. But he's not writing about the hundred and thirty-three murders that happened on his watch from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-two to date. A hundred and thirty-three homicides. And you guys worry about what Robin Vaughn said and didn't say. And none of my council members who didn't wanna have public comments the other night ever talks about the young men who lost their lives in this city. And there's no investigation from Angelo Honorfree, who supposedly investigated an election that robbed people of their civil rights and civil liberties and voting rights. He can, co- concluded investigation in twenty-four hours, but he know nothing about. But he can't find who murdered a hundred and thirty-three people in less than four years. And then no press release about that. Where's the Trentonian writing about garbage every day, all day? Where is the newspaper on the failing school district? Where is the school district on the lack of investment in infrastructure in our city? Tell Gussior to write some press releases about those things, the services, the lack thereof across all, where, look at the parks. No investment in the parks. The money goes to one project uh organization, and they do nothing but pocket the money. So that's all I have to say for now. But I just want Trentonians to start looking at the facts. And the, and the facts of what the mayor does, walk around the streets and party and party and do what he does, which is much of nothing. Tell him to talk about his accomplishments over the past eighteen, I mean, four years. What are his accomplishments for this city? Instead of talking about brown, black and brown people on the council and how we failed to support him. There's six, there's six, five, one, four, three votes all day in favor of his weak docket that he puts out every two weeks. The business of the city gets done at least what upward of eight figures every other week. So when folks say the business of the city isn't getting done, who is the business getting done for? It is not getting done for Trentonians, but it's getting done for a select few people. And don't, don't make me name them. They're the same companies on the docket all day, every day, every week. Do your research, read the docket. The business is getting done. The money is being moved. Your taxpayers' money is being spent. But it ain't being spent or invested in Trenton and for the residents and taxpayers who live here. So that's all I have to say, Council President. I yield my time. Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
Mm-hmm. Thank you, um Councilman, Councilman Michelle.
Yes. I would just like to clear up for Tuesday's meeting. Uh, it was not on the agenda. Civic comment. So, we always abide by the rules and regulations. So, I got it right in front of me here, and it was not on the agenda. So, besides that, the only thing I gotta say is for Ms. Vaughn, wow. I don't know where you're coming from or what you're doing, but we had four years of hell with you, what you did. Four years, what you did. You attacked the police department, you gave the director special orders never to call you for the homicides. You didn't want your name put out there at all to be notified. Our director called everybody on every case and went out to every case. He did his job. You did not wanna be contacted. You went the other way, no matter what was done. Ninety-eight percent of everything you had been involved with, you were wrong. You were wrong. I'm the South Ward council person. I had to come out to your area to clean up your area that you did nothing in. And for you to be on here, showboating once again and tearing everybody up for doing nothing, you're the problem. And I stayed silent the whole time. I did my job, what I had to do. My record shows for itself. But when I gotta come out to South Ward and clean up your neighborhood, you couldn't even put lights in the park, you couldn't even put a light in your doorway where you live. We had to come out there and do it. You had no commitment to do any, anything out there. Nothing at all. But for you to be on here, showboating to the seventy people that are on here, the facts are the facts. You did nothing. The way you disrespected the mayor in the beginning, if there was anything on the books, you wouldn't even be here. You wouldn't even be here. It's a disgrace for me to come up here and challenge you like this. But anybody can look at the paperwork and say, you did nothing in four years, zero. And I have nothing else to say. And that's why I'm not on there. I don't showboat. I do what I had to do, and I did my share. And my books are open for anybody who wants to come in and look at my books, twenty-seven thousand jobs that I did since I came into office. And my books are showing. Let's see what your book show. Zero. Thank you. Good night.
Councilman Harrison?
Uh, I would like to start off first uh by thanking uh the Trenton Area Soup Kitchen. Uh, they let me volunteer on Thanksgiving to go out there to help uh feed people. Um, also like to thank um the Latino merchants, uh Claire's Heart, uh the local P B A. Um, they had uh three seventy-five Mars Avenue, they gave turkey's way to over three hundred families, baskets, which was wonderful. Um, Director, um, um Douglas, are you on the, on, are you on this call?
Yes, I am.
Yes, could you, could you tell, talk about this Saturday, the, the event you're gonna have this Saturday?
This, this civic comment, um, Councilman, you would have to speak to it, sir.
Well, I would like, it, it's, it's his event. I would like him to speak about his event.
You would have to speak to it, Councilman Harrison.
Council, Councilwoman, right, can, can, can you allow Mr. uh, Mr. Douglas to speak about his wonderful?
Councilman Harrison. It's your job to speak to it. You should have the information in front of you. Could you please speak to it for the public?
I, uh, I actually, that's why I, I called him on here, because I wanted him to speak about it. I know, I know, it's funny. It is funny.
Is your job, Council?
I know, it's my job, I know. I, okay. All right, Council President, all right. So, um, you know, it's unbelievable how, you know, we talk about, you know, um, attacking people. The same old thing that I, Mr. Michelle is correct. We've been dealing with this for four and a half years. It's the same old, same old. But I guess, you know, you know, there's an old saying is there was an election, people came out and voted. So, I guess that, that, guess we see how that turned out. Here you go. For everyone who logged on tonight, I wanna say hang in there, it's almost over. Only two meetings left. This has been chaos. We haven't been able to move the city forward. All it's been has been arguing, and it's been chaos. So it's embarrassing that, you know, our council president can't even allow the director of the fire department to talk about his wonderful event. It's on Saturday from eleven to three. Um, we're gonna be feeding people on Saturday at the fire station on Perry Street. There you go, Council President. Thank you, and everybody have a wonderful night.
Councilwoman Caldwell Wilson?
Yes, good evening, everybody. And I wanna thank you all for participating in these meetings throughout the years. They're not easy to, to handle. Um, and can be very contentious at times. And I wanna thank the directors for trying to answer our questions and give us the information, and Mr. Cruz for cooperating with us when we ask you to pull something you usually do so that we can get it corrected. Um, I, you know, I just wanna say that civic comments, and I've been on council for twelve years, and Ms. Vaughn can say what she wants, that I do nothing, but my record speaks for itself, and my constituents always supported me. And they can call me morning, noon, and night, and they have two cell phone numbers that they can contact me. And if they get my voicemail, it's not fooled. So, you know, I mean, it, civic comments, you, you're only gonna hear from one side. You're gonna hear the complaints of the council people. But I have, it's been a custom in the past where the, it gives a council person an opportunity to thank the directors or to give them information on something that needs to be done. And in order to do that, you have to call them up and talk to them. So I don't ever recall as not being able to call on a director at civic comments. It's a dialogue, as Ms. Vaughn said, not just with the public, but with, with the directors. So that being said, I just wanted to tell everybody that the Old Mill Hill Society is having their annual holiday house tour. There will be twenty homes that will be open, and there'll be activities going on in the streets, and you can go to Artworks and get your guide. And um your ticket, I believe it's twenty dollars, and it's a fun day for everybody. So it's a wonderful neighborhood. Regardless of what people say about Mill Hill, it's a, a multicultural neighborhood. And, and everybody gets along and everybody works together. So we look forward to people coming through the homes on Saturday. And so everybody have a good evening, and thank you again for your participation.
Thank you, Councilwoman. So, um, I would just like to uh thank everyone for coming out this evening. And I would like to just uh touch on a couple things. Um, one, I, I first like to just touch bases on the, the election that just uh took place on November the eighth. The residents in the city of Trenton on November the eighth were turned away from the polling places. They said that the machines could not accept the papers, so therefore they could not tabulate the count. So it left us without a footprint of who voted and how the votes were actually cast. We have very little conversation coming out of the clerk's office in reference to the actual election. We have candidates trying to determine whether or not they were gonna be in a runoff, whether or not the votes were actually being hand counted or if they were gonna be tabulated through a machine. We had the prosecutor to say, hey, I did, I finished the actual uh investigation, but didn't bring forth anyone, any professionals, any experts to show who actually went to do the investigating. So, when we're in the middle of court cases fighting for contestants to have their day at the polling site for the residents, for the residents to come out and cast the second vote. The one thing that I would hope that the residents in this city understand that first, if we're gonna do this thing for a second time, there has to be things put in place. You cannot shut down every machine in Trenton and say to me that you had a fair, inequitable election. You cannot tell me that if the machines could not accept the paper ballot because they could not, because the paper did, weren't, wasn't compatible to the machines, but you took them to one site, and then that site had a scanner to accept the paper ballots. It made no sense to me then, and it makes no sense to me now. But moving forward in this, in this runoff, they have already started with the shenanigans. The people in the South Ward are getting ballots mailed to them with the wrong districts on them. And I hope that the people in this city wake up and realize that as long, as long as you allow uh people to treat you any kind of way, that is the way they'll treat you. You should demand better for yourself. Better. I hear my council person say, oh, what did you do? Our job on the council is not to clean up cat litter or dog poop. Our job is to create legislation that will pass, ordinances that will pass. Our job is to create legislation that will pass, ordinances that will pass so that you will have a lawful city and a lawful council and keep the administration in check. It is not to clean up dog crap, it's not to shovel snow. I did not take this role to shovel snow. It's not my job, it did not fall under the criteria. Council President, go clean up six forty-one, they got a dog spill. That's not my job. And so I will say to each and every one of you out there in this city, you only get what you demand. And when you stop demanding the best, you stop getting it. When you keep allowing people to come into your community that never lived here a day in their life and have no good intention for your community, you get what you allow. And as far as the type two school, I take my hat off for that. Because now we can move forward with an elected school board. I don't believe that the entire process was done fairly, but the residents have to stand up for themselves do, for that process. I wanna talk about the Trenton Board of Education and the residents in the City of Trenton going out to get, to be a part of the elected school board. I believe that we have some very, very qualified people here in the City of Trenton. I, I believe that the people are interested in what happens to the children in the City of Trenton. And if they are, there's an opportunity for nine residents to sit on that board. And I hope uh we are able to move forward with that. I wish the candidates that have filed um motions into the Superior Court are granted their motions to actually participate in a more, in a fairer process come December the thirteenth, but time is running out. And um, we must be able to actually let the residents in this city know that there is a runoff. If the at-large candidates do not meet their burden of proof for the courts, there's still a runoff for the South and the North Ward. So all of us needs to do our due diligence in letting the community know that there is a runoff. And I thank each and every one of you again for coming. And I hope that the incoming council do not, do not, do not come on to be rubber stamps, but to actual, actually question, question the process. And if you don't know, ask, because this is, this is not an easy job. It pays very little, and there's a lot of work until. So when you come on, you have to read your material, and you need to know that there is, to me, in my opinion, no dumb question. If you don't know, ask. I thank all of the directors, I thank the public. And Mr. um, Garcia, I will make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Is there a second? Roll call, Miss Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison? Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkins?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Motion carried, meeting adjourned.
Good evening.